Do you have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. You all know, taking and passing the CPE is a requirement for associate degree candidates and for entry into the upper division of City Universities, of the various City University Baccalaureate programs. Thirty-seven thousand students are tested annually during the four test administrations. There any? Yes?
There's just an error that needs to be corrected before we take it to the Board. This is the old form, authorizing the Secretary of the Board, but the General Counsel executes contracts under the bylaws now.
That's a personal contract.
So we just need to...
It's a person.
We need to...
A governmental person.
We need to change this one and the next one to read "General Counsel."
And C as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
The second one as well.
Do we have to make a motion to that and amend that appropriately?
Well, we can pass with the understanding that we're going to get correct...
Friendly amendment. I'm not a big Robert Thule guy. Yes?
I remember when the CPE was first introduced, and as I recall, it was an estimated cost annually of about a million dollars. I know several years have passed and there's inflation, but between A and B and C, which are two parts of the same, I think we're talking five million dollars annually, which is about eight thousand new assistant professors.
Eighty.
Eight zero, eight, eight. I'm wishing, I'm wishing. Eighty new professors.
This for five-year period, though?
No, you bet this is accurate.
Annual life. Five million each year.
Each year.
Ernesto.
You're right. I mean, there has been a substantial increase in the costs associated with the program, and there are two components, as I understand it. One, sheer volume is one of them, in terms of the number of students taking the test. Number two, apparently, it was the case that the ACT significantly understated their cost structure in the initial bidding, and there was some recognition by the university that they had indeed done that, and they had indicated that as they rebid, and as the university rebids, they would sort of correct their pricing. So the short answer is that the university got a tremendous deal in the costs associated with this program in the initial go-around, but as they corrected the pricing going forward as inflation obviously, you know, factored in, and on the production, there were a number of other measures that are in terms of a testing component. Right now, they take about twenty students and they test twenty, and that's moved up to two hundred. So there was a number of changes in the manner in which the tests are being produced and scored, but so there's a combination of things that are affecting the price, but you're absolutely right. It is a substantial increase.
It was an incentive price, and they were strong on into a, I don't remember what it was, but I'm pretty sure it was higher than a million.
Have we had an assessment of the value of this test now in light especially of this really tremendous cost?
The assessment of the CPE as a metric?
Yes.
I think, yes, we do that on a regular basis, and I think it's proven to be a very effective tool in understanding students' readiness to proceed.
I think it's useful in that it really motivates the students to learn those skills because they get the message very early, but this was stunning, quite frankly.
But it was an incentive price when it was originally done because there were bidders that, you know, were really bidding against each other to get in the door, but it was not a realistic price, and it's been incrementally increasing.
I think there's some concern that locking into one vendor, if we are locked into a vendor, and that's a question, will make it difficult to negotiate an optimal price from the university's point of view. Is there any comment on that? Are we locked into a single vendor?
Well, I think that the, in fact, the last time the Executive Committee of the Board met to address this issue, we had to deal with, if you recall, on a fairly emergency basis in the current year to make sure that students were tested. The university, Executive Vice Chancellor Logue, and the institutional research people were very aggressive, including the procurement professionals, were very aggressive in bringing and negotiating the right kind of price. So we are working very hard to make sure that we get the best possible deal, but there's only so many vendors in the community that do this, but we're working very, very hard to make sure that we have the right price, and a lot of people are working very hard to assure that.
Rick, let's... Mr. Chairman, in fact, the reason this is a one-year contract is that the university's in the midst of an RFP for this very service. It was impossible to get it out in time for the coming year, so we were looking to extend this for one year, but there is in place an RFP to create that kind of competitive process that you've just asked about for the year following and thereafter.
Okay. Motion's on the table. It's been seconded, and no further questions or comments. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Item C is a resolution authorize the General Counsel, this is the resolution, right, authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the Office of the University Controller to purchase the proficiency test form development, production, and CPA distribution services. Contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after advertising and sealed bidding by the Controller pursuant to law and regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per fiscal year chargeable to the appropriate FAS code. Contract term shall be five years with an option to terminate on each anniversary date of the contract. I, do I have to continue? No, that's it. Before we do that, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further conversation? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Resolution, item number D, resolution authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract with Lincoln Center Institute for the Provision of Arts Education, collaboration between the City University of New York and LCI, which is the Lincoln Center Institute, under a single source procurement between LCI and the university pursuant to law and university regulations. The term of the agreement shall be for three years with an option for two, one-year renewals at the pricing provided in said agreement and in the university's best interest. The agreement shall commence September 1st, 2009, and the university's purchase shall not exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars per fiscal year chargeable to the colleges and central offices appropriate Financial Accounting System Code during the applicable fiscal years. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Questions, answers, comments? Professor Phil?
Will the instructional staff of the Lincoln Center Institute be covered by the community labor agreement?
I'm not, I don't think so. I think there would not be university employees, they would be, you know, and I don't, because they're not, they're not community employees, they're part of the Lincoln Center Institute. They collaborate with the university, but they're not members of our union.
Comments? Have we used this continuation?
Nineteen ninety-four. We can do this in nineteen ninety-four.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any aye? Opposed? Okay. Final resolution authorize the City University to adopt a revised schedule of tuition and fee charges for students enrolling in the Baruch and international executive programs effective fall 2009, and that students enrolling in these programs pay the prevailing in-state tuition for graduate students and a separate program fee of three thousand dollars, and it be further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs to execute a contract on behalf of Baruch College to purchase services to operate the executive programs for a period of one year. The contract shall be awarded on a basis of best value to a responsive and responsible offer or after public advertisements at any ti, and any, I don't know what that means. And timely submission. Sorry. Of sealed proposals pursuant to law and university regulations. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Questions, answers, comments?
What's the current C?
Yeah, I was wondering that also.
Let me give the background to this. There's actually nothing new about this. This is the same program at pretty much the same price that Baruch has run for quite a long time. This is really in the nature of a cleanup resolution to make clear that the total price that students in these programs abroad have been paying actually have two components to them. One is the tuition, and the other is a fee which covers the cost that an outside contractor incurs in providing apartments to the faculty when they go over, the foreign airfare, the rental of the space, and so on. And so this was in an effort to make clear what had previously existed and which was not clear, that a piece of this was tuition, a piece of this was this fee, and that this outside entity might be, will be continued for another year, and that thereafter will do a new competitive process, because there are now, as you probably read in the most recent Chronicle of Higher Education, there are now a lot of firms out there who provide these kinds of services for programs abroad.
All right. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The rest of the meeting is made up of reports. First report is from the Controller, Barry, regarding our KPMG audit plan for this current year.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Barry.
The fiscal year 2009 audit process is officially begun. Today was the first day, and KPMG will be visiting our colleges to test the business processes and controls at each of those schools, as well as to determine our compliance with the federal regulations as reflected in the OMB circular A133, and I know that you've heard of this before when KPMG has been here. This phase of the audit will run from June 1st through August 14th, and upon completion of the work at the colleges, KPMG will turn its attention to the Office of the University Controller, and during this phase, KPMG will be determining if the amounts reported in our financial statements are materially correct. During this phase, while most of the activity will be on the Controller's office, the KPMG will also, as they've done in the past, will contact colleges to try to explain variances that they may see in tuition revenue, in deferred revenues, and receivables, and other accounting activities. The phase in the Controller's office begins September 1st. It extends through October 30th, and of course culminates in the preparation, or at least in the publication, of the university's 2009 financial statements. In addition, KPMG will also prepare a management letter and internal control report, both of which are shared with the Board along with the financial statement audit and the A133 audit. Nine colleges have been specifically identified for test work relating both to the financial statements and to the A133 audit, and those nine schools are Baruch, Bronx, Hunter, John Jay, Kingsborough, Medgar Evers, the Graduate Center, the CUNY School of Law, and New York. And KPMG will be at those colleges beginning, actually, they started today, I believe, at Hunter College, and that part of the audit will go through July 8th. The remaining colleges will be visited between June 29th and August 14th, as I have previously indicated, and at these schools, the schools that are not part of the nine, the focus will be on compliance with the A133 rules and regulations. In addition, this year, KPMG has informed us that they will be adding an additional amount of test work, and that has to do with a information technology audit. Because we implemented the CUNY First General Ledger last July, what KPMG wants to do is to review the controls and security in that system, as well as to look at the reconciliation between our old or existing legacy system and the new CUNY First system. So as I said, they will, they've already started their work, the colleges have been notified, and we are looking forward to a good audit this year.
Barry, how much do we pay KPMG? How much do we pay them in the past, last year?
We pay them, this year, we're paying them about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's an amount, usually it's a five-year contract that increases each year by a set amount. This year, because of the extra work that they'll be doing on the information technology, it'll probably run us an additional twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for that.
Are there any other questions from Barry? Thank you. Ernesto?
Thank you. We're going to move into the Investment Committee in a moment, but I wanted to first bring you up to date on a number of budget matters. Let me first begin with sort of a quick overview of where we are with the state. I know the last time I reported that, you know, we had a stated budget, that overall we had an increase in our overall funding in order to cover our continuing obligations and to engage in a minor investment program. That investment program includes, just to remind the Board, the university's commitment to a financial aid program for students for this university who would be challenged by the increases in tuition, so we are moving forward as we committed with that program. We're happy to report, and we're also attempting to move with a minor investment program to hire some additional full-time faculty and to focus on some important student services. And the key student services are in the area of financial aid offices. We want to make sure that our financial aid offices are, one, we know that they have been burdened over the past couple of years of tremendous increases in applications, and we're acknowledging that by giving them some additional support. In addition, given the particular sort of state of the economy, we're also making sure that our career counseling offices are well and properly positioned to assist students as they graduate to enter the job market. And finally, we are working closely to make sure that returning veterans in New York, when they come to CUNY and apply, have the appropriate services in their very, is veteran offices. So those are the three things that anchor our student service investments, and in addition to doing as many things as we possibly can, in an environment, I should remind you of one that still is a little bit uncertain, it is, it's good to be, I'm talking about a minor investment program, but we still need to acknowledge for the record that there is some level of uncertainty in Albany, and we are taking the appropriate actions, both centrally and at the colleges, to make sure that the appropriate reserves are established, and the colleges understand that there would be perhaps a potential mid-year reduction. Hopefully, by the time the semester begins, at that time, it'll be midway through the state fiscal year, and we'll have a pretty good lens on whether or not there will be a kind of rescission, but in any event, the colleges are doing the responsible thing and taking the responsible action and making sure the appropriate reserves are in place. So we're able to manage the, an investment program, albeit not as ambitious as we had hoped originally, but nonetheless making progress and at the same time taking the prudent actions to make sure that in the event that there was any particular actions taken by the governor or the legislature, that colleges will be able to maintain the core services that the chancellor, both academic and student services insist on, and so we're pretty fairly in a good position to do that. And that would be the sort of scenario on the state side with the city colleges. For the City of New York, and for the community colleges primarily, just to recap, the state of New York, in part because of the stimulus dollars that were provided, was able to restore aid to community colleges that was originally proposed to be cut by ten percent in the executive budget. So from the state side, we are off in a good position. The City of New York is entering its final stages of budget negotiations between the mayor and the city council. You'll recall the last time I reported that the mayor and the city, that the city executive budget contained tens of millions of dollars in reductions that were sort of prior year reductions that were, in part, as we all understand, the city budget process related to the budget negotiation process with the city council. There are requirements the City of New York has for maintenance of effort that sort of stabilized the budget for the community colleges, but nonetheless, above the requirements of the maintenance of effort, which is about twenty-five million dollars, the university would need about sixteen million dollars in order to cover a cost of collective bargaining and fringe benefits and other mandatory needs. The last reports that I got from the city, our folks who are working downtown, they said negotiations are proceeding, they're proceeding pretty well. We're hopeful to get some kind of relief. It's uncertain what it will be, but apparently the city and the city council are trying to wrap this thing up in the next couple of weeks, so we will know for the community colleges what the final budget picture is. But like the city colleges, we don't expect any major instability. We actually expect a stable budget environment, but like the state of New York, the City of New York is also facing budget dangers, and the community colleges will be asked to take the kind of actions like the city colleges to be prudent in its investment programs, set aside the appropriate reserves until we know a little bit more about where we are in the middle of the state fiscal year in October, but we feel pretty good about where we are. There were a number of things outside of the community college budget that are still challenges, and that would include financing of the blackmail initiative that the city council continuously put forward, as well as some centers and institutes. I almost forgot to mention that the, in the mayor's executive budget, he was able to provide for the full financing and restoration of the Peter F. Vallone Scholarship Program, which is an important program for students, particularly in this environment, and it was good to sort of take that off the table and not have the level of uncertainty that, you know, always accompanies that program at this time of the year. So that was one of the very nice features of the mayor's executive budget proposal. So that's where we are with the city budget and the community college budget.
Questions?
Just, I mean, I think that it's good that the mayor did fund the Peter Vallone Scholarship. I think it's disappointing that we can't just get a little bit more movement on some of the other monies that would allow us to take advantage of the match, because that has to do with the, you know, the capital integrity of our community colleges and buildings, and so, you know, I know we'll persist to try to influence that, but it's just a little disturbing.
Okay. Janet?
Okay, I'd like to call up our CIO, Janet Crone, and a gentleman from Cambridge Associates who will give us a update on our performance and make some recommendations on the implementation of the asset allocation policy that this board enacted back in December, and we will need to move into executive session.
We'll move into executive session. Welcome back.
Hi, we're pleased to be here today to give you an update on the investment pool and our consultants from Cambridge Associates, Tom Ishman-Jefferson and Mark Ballard are here. They'll provide us with an update on our performance, although the formal report is through April. They tell me they've got a very pleasant surprise with good results through May, and we're also going to make a recommendation, which will be the next step in fulfilling our new asset allocation, that is, to make a recommendation on a real asset mandate.
So you should all have a set of materials here. I have a jacket on it, but the first page of it is a very brief capital markets overview, and I'm only going to say a couple of words. As you probably all know, we are in the middle, yes, exactly, we are in the middle of a powerful market rally that's been going on since March 9th. The big question out there is obviously whether this is sustainable or whether this is a rally that ultimately will fail. The things that have us somewhat optimistic is that we are seeing some green shots out there, we are seeing things, some things either deteriorating at a slower pace and some things actually turning around, like consumer optimism, but there are still some major headwinds out there. The economy is still slowing, and was at least in the first quarter slowing at quite rapid pace. Unemployment is still rising, house prices haven't stabilized yet as far as we can ascertain, and one of the things that has us somewhat concerned is that normally in recessions, and especially in hard recessions, the things don't really turn around for real until you've seen abandonment in the investment community. We haven't seen that in a powerful rally here, and the speed at which the things have come up really does reflect that we haven't seen an abandonment in the investment community yet. So that has us somewhat worried. What makes the picture very murky is that this is a feedback mechanism, the whole market, that just the mere sentiment that things are getting better might in fact make it better, and parts of that have been seen, for instance, in the consumer sentiment, to the extent that the consumer starts spending, even if it's on false optimism, if you will, well, that helps the economy. The same thing with, a lot of companies have been able to issue debt here, and that actually helps their short-term funding needs, even if it's based on irrational exuberance or whatever, what have you. So it's just a very unclear picture. Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball to tell us whether this is sustainable or not. We urge people to be cautious in this environment, given the high level of uncertainty out there. If you turn to the next page, this is through April, May was a good month for most of the markets. The U.S. equity markets were up five to six percent. The non-U.S. markets were up even more. EFA, which is the developed non-U.S. market, were up about twelve percent, partly fueled by a falling dollar. Emerging markets were up seventeen percent. So all in all, it was a strong month for equities, and we tried to do, based on, purely on index returns, because we don't have your manager's specific returns through May, but it looks like, based on index return, that your portfolio should have been up around five percent in May, which brings you to around twelve percent for the quarter-to-date, so just April and May, and if we take, talk year-to-date, you should be up five percent, which is two percent more than the S&amp;P alone. So that's relatively comfortable. The problem again is we don't know. One thing that makes us relatively comfortable then about the uncertainty is that you still have a high amount of fixed income in your portfolio. If you turn to the page with asset allocation, which is this page with the bar charts, you can see that we are in this period of transitions where you're coming off a portfolio that has a very high bond allocation. We are drawing that down, and we will be drawing that down slowly as we're implementing some of the other strategies, for instance, the real assets that Mark is going to talk about. We also have an overweight to U.S. equities, but you can see that the underweight, large underweight, we had in non-U.S. equity and emerging markets, that we are gradually moving into them as we decided at the last meeting, and so our entries into those markets have been fortunate, given that they have been returning very well in this last period. And that is more or less where we stand, and again, for performance, I won't go into specific numbers unless you, we all have the numbers here. The managers are performing in line with expectations, and again, the main numbers give us some satisfaction. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark, unless you have any questions to...
When are you going to have the final main report so we can speculate?
We will have it, at the latest, ten business days after month, then, so we should have it somewhere around the 10th or 11th.
Can we just send it to...
We will do.
Mark?
Go to executive session.
Well, before we do, and why, we hear any questions?
No, it's to executive session.
Okay, great. We'll move into executive session, all in favor? As one of our new providers, we have a motion on the table to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We hear a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Do we have any further business?
No business.
No further business? We hear by adjourn. Yes, Professor Phil?
I'd like to speak in support of what Vice Chairman Barry just said a moment, a few moments ago about the city capital budget for the community colleges in particular. It's very important for the city to step up to the plate to provide matching funds for capital projects for our community of colleges and comprehensive colleges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. For an agenda?
So, Scott is in Hawaii.
Yes. You know, that's actually not bad.